Meeting to open session and calling to order the regular Board of Education meeting for Indian Prairie School District 204 on Monday, December 5th, 2022. Michelle, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Donahue.
Here.
Ms. Grover.
Present.
Mr. Carubus.
Here.
Mr. Rising.
Here.
Ms. Demme.
Present.
Ms. Jane.
Here.
And Ms. Fostick.
Here.
We have a quorum. Mr. Carubus, will you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we have a public hearing at 7:05 that we have to have right at 7:05. So I'm going to skip ahead in our agenda because I think we have time to do our board salutes. We have two. Mr. Rising?
The board salutes Maywatt Elementary Physical Education Teacher Terry Andrews and Fisher Middle School Special Education Teaching Assistant Patrick Kearney for being nominated for the Illinois State Board of Education's 2023 Teacher of the Year and Those Who Excel Awards. The Educator Recognition Program seeks to acknowledge and appreciate Illinois's amazing teachers, administrators, support staff, and community members who work to make a positive impact in their schools. Congratulations to Terry and Patrick on receiving this prestigious nomination.
Ms. Fostick.
District 204 students receive Youth Service Awards. The board salutes eight District 204 high school students for receiving Youth Service Awards from the city of Naperville and Kids Matter. The Youth Service Award recognizes and honors outstanding volunteer efforts by local area students and encourages all youth to get involved in community service. The 2022 honoraries nominated by community organizations are Wabonzi Valley Senior Ryan Lee and Junior Himani Rea Shaw, Niqua Valley Seniors Joel Setia and Laney Kang, excuse me, and Junior Dev Bodalia, and Matia Valley Seniors Isabella Afshari and Riley Liu, and freshman Brianna Tranko. Congratulations to all students who were honored with this remarkable award.
All right.
Sorry about that. Turn my mic on next time.
All right. Well, we're going to have a couple moments of silence for two minutes till we get to the 7:05. I don't want to rush the student report and it's like next on the agenda. So we do have to wait till 7:05. Do you want to read it again? Okay. You want to read it again? Just, yeah?
I'll do it more quickly. District 204 students receive Youth Service Awards. The board salutes eight District 204 high school students for receiving Youth Service Awards from the city of Naperville and Kids Matter. The Youth Service Award recognizes and honors outstanding volunteer efforts by local area students and encourages all youth to get involved in community service. The 2022 honoraries nominated by community organizations are Wabonzi Valley Senior Ryan Lee and Junior Himani Rea Shaw, Niqua Valley Seniors Joel Setia and Laney Kang, and Junior Dev Bodalia, and Matia Valley Seniors Isabella Afshari and Riley Liu, and freshman Brianna Tranko. Congratulations to all students who are honored with this remarkable award.
It is now 7:05 and I'm calling to order the public hearing for the 2022 tax levy. Go ahead. Uh-uh. I don't think you're on.
All right. Good evening, members of the Board of Education. Tonight's public hearing, as required by the truth in taxation requirements, is the final step towards the adoption of our 2022 property tax levy. The adoption of the levy is an annual process that must be completed by the end of December. Notice of tonight's hearing was published on the district's website on November 21st, on the Daily Herald on November 22nd, and in the Naperville Sun on November 23rd. The business office has not received any public comment regarding the levy or tonight's public hearing. The Illinois School Code gives the authority to boards of education to levy a tax on real property within the district to support our public schools. Tonight's levy is prepared in accordance with the Property Tax Extension Limitation Law, or PTEL, which has been the legal authority over Indian Prairie's levy for the past 30 years. Under PTEL, the district's levy is limited to the prior year's Consumer Price Index with a maximum of 5% plus an allowance for new property. As the 2021 CPI was 7%, the 5% cap is used in tonight's levy. Tonight's levy is the same as the tentative levy presented at the November 7th, 2022 Board of Education meeting. It is materially consistent with revenue assumptions included in the 2223 operating budget and budget documents presented at the February 28th, May 16th, and July 18th Board of Education meetings. Tonight, administration is recommending an operating levy of $314,883,166, a 6.32% increase over the prior year extension. This increase represents the 5% increase tied to the Consumer Price Index plus a 1.32% increase for new property. Once filed with the county clerks, the county will review the levy and adjust it based on the actual amount of new property. As such, it is not likely we will receive the full amount levied this evening. The county clerks will also automatically apply levy for a payment on the district's outstanding bonds. This levy will be approximately $27.1 million, a decrease of just over $507,000 from last year, or a 1.84% decrease. The total levy is estimated at $341,975,577, a 5.62% increase from last year. In making the levy recommendation, administration performs a complete review of the current and future budgets and current reserves to ensure we are asking for revenues only to the extent necessary. Property taxes are the most significant funding source for the district, representing approximately 77% of total revenues. Other revenue sources, primarily state and federal revenues, have not increased in line with recent Consumer Price Index increases. In reviewing our reserves, at June 30th, the district's cash position was approximately $192 million. This was offset by $66 million of district liabilities. Of the remaining balance, substantially all was received in the month of June as part of the first property tax installment. In summary, tonight's levy recommendation is supported by both our current budget needs and the reserves of the district. The district does not participate in the assessment of properties or the application of various property tax exemptions. District taxpayers with questions about their individual assessments or tax bills should contact the county supervisor or county treasurer as appropriate. With that said, the district has received estimated valuation information from both counties for both new and existing property. Based on this information tonight, I believe tonight's levy will generate a tax rate consistent with prior years. We also estimate that a home with a $300,000 fair market value will see a tax increase of about $223 or 4.48% for the current, for the current year. At this time, I recommend the board adopt the 2022 levy during new business later in this meeting. I'm available for any questions from the board either at this time or at the time of that adoption.
Well, there was no public comment signed up for this topic, so I need a motion and a second to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing for the levy as presented.
Is there any discussion? Michelle, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Rising.
Yes.
Ms. Demme.
Aye.
Mr. Carubus.
Yes.
Ms. Grover.
Yes.
Ms. Donahue.
Yes.
Ms. Jane.
Yes.
And Ms. Fostick.
Yes.
The motion passes. Our next agenda item is our student representative report from Sophie Lee from Wabonzi Valley High School. Welcome. Yeah, you can bend it down.
Hi, my name is Sophia Lee and I am here today to represent Wabonzi Valley High School. As a Warrior, I am proud to report that our Wabonzi community continues to thrive and provide many outstanding experiences for our students. In regards to clubs and activities, Wabonzi competitive clubs are really in full swing with nearly 1,300 students involved in our over 60 clubs. Regarding our competitive clubs, speech has their first competition this Saturday at Naperville Central. On November 19th, Science Olympia competed in Palatine and brought home 27 individual medals. Chess team holds a five-to-one record and Scholastic Bowl is tearing through DVC competition currently, and both levels are currently undefeated. The postseason is looking promising for all of our competitive clubs. Our Special Olympics basketball team has a solid three wins so far this season with their wins being by an average of 20 points. And their pack, The Place, is this Wednesday, December 7th. Wabonzi has several initiatives supporting families in our community. We have our Holiday Elf program that supports direct family needs through the offices of our social workers. We have three Wabonzi families that are being supported by our OLAS Organization of Latin American Students Student Group, and we have our Student Council sponsored Giving Tree where the entire building is encouraged to take one of the several dozen tags to support families at Wabonzi and the Fox Valley United Way. And of course, this past weekend, Dub V hosted our annual Prism Concerts. If you know Prism, you know they are certainly hard to describe, but it does bring in the holiday season as over 500 of Dub V's band, choir, and orchestra students put on this outstanding concert. In terms of athletics, the Wabonzi Valley winter athletic season is in full swing. We have a total of 275 student athletes participating in the eight sports and 25 levels that we offer at Wabonzi. Winter sports include cheerleading, dance, boys' basketball, girls' basketball, boys' swim and dive, wrestling, girls' gymnastics, and girls' bowling. After the new year, we will introduce two new sports that overlap the winter and spring season, girls' and boys' track and field. So far during this winter season, our wintry athletes have seen a lot of success, highlighted by our varsity girls' basketball team who placed second in the Warhawk Thanksgiving Tournament, and our varsity boys' basketball team winning the Batavia Thanksgiving Tournament. In fact, all four levels, varsity sophomore FAFB attended the Batavia Thanksgiving Tournament and did not lose a game, winning the tournament at all four levels. Both the boys' and girls' basketball programs face Mataya Valley this week. Wrestling has been competitive at all four levels and look forward to traveling to Mataya Valley on Thursday evening for a DuPage Valley Conference match. Our dance program started off their competition season with a great performance at Naperville North yesterday and are excited to host their annual WVHS Dance Invite this Saturday. Our competitive cheerleading team has been practicing extremely hard and look forward to their first competition this weekend at Lincoln Way East High School. Boys' Swim and Dive hosted their first meet last Friday and swam extremely well against two excellent programs in Hinsdale Central and St. Charles East. The Boys' Swim and Dive team look forward to competing at the Barco Relays this weekend. Our Girls' Bowling and Girls' Gymnastics squads have began their competition seasons as well and competed extremely well. This past weekend, our gymnastics traveled to Naperville North for their annual invite, while our Girls' Bowling team traveled to Cherry Bowl for their annual Jayhawk invite. Both teams represented themselves extremely well at their respective invites. The Wabonzi Valley Athletic Department is excited for the winter season and look forward to watching our student athletes continue to compete at a high level. Moving on to academics, this past month, we learned that we have 130 Illinois State Scholars in the class of 2023. We began a brand-new outreach program called the Gold Ambassadors where we send freshmen to our feeder middle schools to help them with the course selection process and the transition to high school. Our music department had 44 students chosen by audition to participate in the ILMEA District 9 festivals. This is always something that our music students shine in. On November 16th, we recognized 44 students for our Warrior values of accountability and respect. These students are selected and recognized by staff at a morning awards ceremony. That's all for the Wabonzi Valley Board Report. Thank you, and as always, go Warriors!
A lot of stuff to report on there. Okay, it is now time for a public comment and 60 minutes is allowed. Each person is limited to three minutes. When addressing the board, we ask that you respect the confidentiality and safety of our students and school district personnel. We also ask that those addressing the board be cognizant that this is an open meeting and is available to all age groups, and as such, ask that you consider who the audience members are this evening and keep your comments age-appropriate. Public comment represents the voice and opinion of the speaker. There will be no feedback from the board members during the meeting, but follow-up will be provided by an administrator as appropriate. Although this is not required, it is helpful for the board to know whether the comments and concerns we hear are being raised by residents. So we ask that you state if you live in the district and if you currently have children in our schools. So tonight we have five speakers, and the first speaker is Sunil Narayana.
Good evening, members of the board and the superintendent.
Is that, is that a?
Yeah. Thanks once again for this opportunity to hear me out. I'm here to talk about the bus transportation issue that's been going on and expecting a very positive outcome for the next academic year. I wanted to come back to our starting point, that is, sorry, I live in the Eagle Point neighborhood and my son studies in still middle school. He's a seventh grader. I wanted to come back to the same point where we started. We were denied transportation based on an IDOT hazard safety assessment, which found that since we live less than 1.5 miles and the total comes to about 10 points and it needs a 12 to qualify for it. So that was the assessment. In the Downers Grove School District 58, there is a similar situation where the O'Neill School, there is a neighborhood which had done a similar assessment and they had a similar score of 10. What I'm coming to say is the board has the authority, as they did. They allocated two judgment points and created a total of 12 whereby it was given an exception and buses were allowed. So that's, that's a case I want to present here. Also, as a small reminder, the last week, we received a note from the school about the increase in number of cars coming and the proper order is not maintained, there's a safety of students being impacted and all that. So if the transportation is withdrawn in the next year, there is going to be another 60 to 80 cars additionally coming during winters. So, thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is LaWenda Jean Payton.
Good evening, Board. It's LoWida Jean Payton. I do reside within the district. My daughter is a sophomore at Niqua Valley High School. I am here today to discuss the dynamics of what's happening with our curriculum within the American History Program. Unfortunately, last year, students at Niqua Valley High School were subjected to a deceding cotton-picking lesson, and we had a lot of, too nauseam, meetings, conversations regarding that. Unfortunately, a year transpires, and we have the same type of lesson occur at Wabonzi Valley High School. Again, we were told last year that it was, you know, just happens to be a couple of teachers, even though it was several classes, that were somewhat doing something that supposedly was told 10 years ago not to do. However, I do not consider that a coincidence considering that it did occur again at another high school within our district. So at this point, the district, we really need to reevaluate what's happening within our schools as it relates to simulations. I don't know who you need to actually have approvals as to how we're going to move forward. However, I like to be the change that I like to see, and I'm more than willing to be a part of that. However, I do believe that if we want to continue to have justice, equity, and inclusion for, for all of our students, and not have harmful lessons, that we need to actually address what's going on within the curriculum instead of trying to hide it. So I appreciate your time today.
Thank you. The next speaker is Jarrett Payton.
Good evening, Board. Obviously, my name is Jarrett Payton. I'm the other half or the lesser half of the two here. And I just wanted to at least come in to express the same sentiment that my wife just expressed to you in reference to the lesson, as we termed it, the cotton picking lesson. Now, I know it was not necessarily the lesson being put out or being pushed in that direction, but that is the way that it came back through to us. When our child, our daughter, came back and expressed that information to us, it made us feel a certain type of way. And the only way that I felt that we could do is trying to address it to you guys to make sure that you are very aware that this is going on. I'm guessing that most individuals here may not have even known anything about it, but this lesson was one that was pretty hurtful. And it was not just for myself, it was not just for my wife, it was for various African-American families that are in the district. And for that, I felt as though that it was appropriate to make sure to leave that out there, to address that, to make sure that you're very aware of what happened and let you know the type of pain that that did cause. There, obviously, I'm not a teacher, so I have to give that to the individuals that know how to do the education. That is what you do. That's your responsibility and you're experts at doing that. But from the perspective, from what we're hearing, and everything that we've gathered, the information that we've gathered, it's about context. The context that was put out there, it was just very limited. The type of things that were being stated by the instructors and those individuals that we know that we caught up with, with the information, it was very, very, very hurtful, very painful. So with that being the case, I know me and the wife, we had an opportunity to talk with someone, actually more than just me and her, and we spoke with the, the equity advisor here in the area, and we wanted to make sure that we brought forth some things that we just, that we thought would be good things to at least discuss and say could be something that could get us to a different place. A couple of those points, we wanted to make sure that the district is addressing in the public board meeting. A statement that rejects any kind of anti-blackness or socially insensitive and disrespectful instructional practices to African-American students. A plan of action for teacher professional development and/or method and sequence of teaching American history that is willing to examine racism in ways that does minimize the Black experience to trauma and explores oppression in the multi-dimensional ways. I have a few others that I want to mention, but I can't in care of time. I don't want to hold anything up or anything like that, but I think that this is something that we need to really try to go forth with. If we are the type of district that we are, that we're forward-thinking and we're really trying to assert our ways and trying to help all students in a final and pure way, holistically, these are the types of things we need to do, to stand out in front of it. If we have persons that are saying that there are issues, please address them. Do not hide them. Step out in front of it and deal with it. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Kristin Rocher.
Good evening. My name is Kristin Rocher. At the previous board meeting, I spoke about the incident that occurred with my son, who on the second day of kindergarten was able to leave the building undetected and walk all the way home in the middle of the day. I also talked about the exterior doors of our elementary schools having no alert system of any kind to an opened or not engaged, unlocked but shut, exterior door. Now let's talk solutions. The response to my initial email to Dr. Tally, who did not respond himself, was from the District 204's Elementary School Superintendent. These are the following measures she deemed as good enough that were put in place as a result of our incident. All kindergarten teachers have shared with their students the rule that they must stay inside the school unless with an adult. If you ever see someone leave school alone, you must tell an adult. They created a social story to reinforce this message and read it out in class. Stop signs were placed on exterior doors. Principal told students not to leave. Principal told students not to open exterior doors for anyone, even someone they know. Principal continues to remind teachers not to prop doors open and to make sure the doors are shut and locked, and the locks are engaged. Click. Lots of opportunity for human error there. I get it. You're in the process of firing a company to evaluate the schools. They're going to evaluate the doors as part of it. We have a bidding process, evaluation, awarding contracts, actual implementation, and that could take years. You don't need to pay a company to evaluate the exterior doors. My son did it for you, for free. His elementary school didn't even know he had left the building when I called. They didn't know an exterior door at their school had been opened, or which one. Now, let's discuss for a moment our district's very own preschool in this building downstairs. My mom was a teacher assistant at our preschool for 20 years. When my mom started working there, there were no exterior door monitoring technology. Then a little girl left school without permission and ran and jumped into her mom's car. Exterior door monitoring technology outdated by today's standards was implemented immediately. Unless deactivated by staff, there are alerts which activate upon opening. If that technology was available back then and easily implemented at preschool, I don't understand why it would not be easily implemented into the elementary schools, or why our incident is not taken as seriously as the one which affected change at the preschool, seeing as they knew the girl ran out. Not the case for my son. It's likely that you are unaware of this because I have come to learn through this unfortunate process, our district does not require an official incident report for elopement. Countless parents of present and former 204 students have reached out to me with similar experiences. Their child leaving, no one knowing. Are there statistics to prove that point? No. No official incident report? No proof. How convenient. Again, you have the power to make this change. You have the power to protect our students and teachers.
Ms. Donahue, the speaker's time has ended.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Our next speaker is RJ Carter.
Good evening, members of the board, my fellow citizens and students. My name is RJ Carter. I'm a senior at Niqua Valley High School, Go Wildcats. I live, of course, I live in the district, and I have talked with some of my fellow students, and my mothers also talked with some of their parents, and something that we are a little concerned about is the alarming number of people with the flu in our schools. And I have friends at Wabonzi, I have friends at Mataya, and there's been a flu-like virus spreading throughout the school, taking out teachers, taking out students. And I just thought, I'm currently here for a government project, but I thought that I would, I would just bring that up. It's troubling, the amount of kids that are, you know, out with the flu, and I don't know if you all can do anything about that, but if you all can, I would implore you to. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We now move to our consent agenda and superintendent report. We will start with the superintendent report.
Thank you, Ms. Donahue, members of the Board of Education, Indian Prairie community. Tonight, I have to start my comm- Tonight, I have to start my comments with sad news. Members of our community are mourning the passing of one of our students, Ms. Eliana Buenos-Laylis, a student at Wabonzi Valley High School. She's a former student at McCarty Elementary and Fisher. We want her family to know that we send our condolences to them and we are sorry for their loss. I ask that we take a moment of silence in remembrance of Eliana. Thank you. Tonight, before the Board of Ed meeting, we were able to celebrate 50 years of Indian Prairie by reconnecting with former superintendents and Board of Ed members who, over the last 50 years, have made our system great. It was an honor to talk with them tonight and celebrate our district due to their work as leaders. I would be remiss if I did not say that our success was due also to the hard work of our staff and our schools over the last 50 years, having direct connections with our children. Additionally, the partnership that exists between the parents and the district is why we continue to achieve our success. As we know, the traditional gift for 50 years is gold. Gold, as we know, is strong, resilient, and always valued. The same can be said for our district. Strong in its ability to weather any condition around us, resilient in its ability to be flexible and agile and always bounce back. And finally, this district has always gained in its value over time to now being identified by NISH as the 36th best district out of more than 10,500 districts. The first 50 years have been outstanding. We are now on to the next 50 years of excellence for our staff, our community, and most importantly, our students. Before I return the meeting to Ms. Donahue, I'd like to take a few moments to discuss our current Title I programs. Title I is a federal program that provides additional funding for schools with concentrations of poverty. There are two programs within the Title I system. Those programs include targeted assistance and whole-school programs. When a school is at or above 40% of free or reduced meals, then a school can have a whole-school Title I program. In a whole-school program, federal money can be spent on all the students in the school by providing services to all the children. Federal money can be spent on professional development for all staff in the building. Federal funds can be used to extend learning time, instructional coaches. When a school is under 40%, the school can provide targeted assistance, which means only those students in the school identified as Title I can receive support using the money from the federal government. Only those teachers who support those specific students can receive professional development provided through the federal money. The four Title I schools in our district are school-wide Title I programs. Two of our schools are above the 40% threshold and two of the schools, we were able to request a waiver to offer a school-wide program, even though they were below 40%. It has been stated that the percentage of free and reduced meal students at those schools are too high, that we should reduce the number of students. The only way to do that would be to move students from their community school, the schools at which they can walk to or easily commute, and send them to another school. There's an assumption that the neighboring schools have low free and reduced meal numbers and can absorb additional numbers when they do not. We are not considering moving children from their home school and busing them to schools miles away in an effort to reduce the number of students who receive free and reduced meals at specific schools. That would make it difficult for children to be engaged in activities before school or after school and make it difficult for parents, guardians, who can now walk to their school to attend conferences, school events, and volunteer. Additionally, we would be spreading the limited Title I money across many more schools rather than concentrating the money within a small number. Our Board of Ed has supported our Title I schools with additional staffing that is not paid through the federal funds. Class sizes are reduced in our Title I schools. Because of declining federal funding, we have used general funding to provide numerous supports in our Title I schools. We have also received grants for our Title I schools. Currently, we have a 21st Century Grant of 1.5 million focused on literacy and STEM. We have done training in our Title I schools on growth mindset. Staff from Georgetown and Longwood have been engaged all this year with growth mindset expert Mary Kay Ricci and professional development. I have worked in some school districts where there are Title I schools with 75%, 80%, and even 90% free and reduced meals. Those students have scored as well or better than their peers in schools with much lower free and reduced meal percentages. All of our Title I schools have been identified as commendable by the state. It is always about teaching and learning happening within the schools. I believe our teachers and our administrators are focused on the teaching and learning. We have had presidential scholars who have attended our Title I schools as well as national merit-recognized students. Our children are achieving and succeeding in the Title I schools. I'll turn it back to you, Ms. Donahue.
Thank you. We now move to our consent agenda. I need a motion for the approval of consent agenda items D through H.
I move to approve consent agenda items D through H.
A second. Any discussion? Michelle, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Jane?
Yes.
Ms. Fosdick?
Yes.
Mr. Carubus?
Yes.
Ms. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Rising?
Yes.
Ms. Demme?
Aye.
Ms. Grover?
The motion passes. Next, we move to our action items. I need a motion and a second to approve the 2022 tax levy as presented.
I move that we approve the 2022 tax levy, fiscal and business management for 30, revenue and investment for 40, for taxing and borrowing authority, as presented.
Any discussion? Michelle, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Demme?
Aye.
Mr. Carubus?
Yes.
Mr. Rising?
Yes.
Ms. Grover?
Yes.
Ms. Donahue?
Yes.
Ms. Jane?
Yes.
And Ms. Fosdick?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Good job, Matt.
We did have the opportunity to discuss that a month ago, so that triggered questions at that time. So, next up, we will now have our presentation from Dr. Rafael Scarra and Tracy Selleck regarding the 2022-2023 English Language Learning Program.
Good evening.
Good evening.
It is such a pleasure to see you again after a year. Madam President, Dr. Tally, and distinguished members of the board, we are here to give you an update on our ELL program with a little touch of difference from what we did last year so we don't become cumbersome in terms of the information we provide you. I thank you very much for all the questions you guys have sent and we've sent some replies. If we can expand further on those, we'd be more than happy.
Just really quick, the definition of ELL, so people know?
English Language Learning. So, in this presentation, we're going to review a few points regarding last year's presentation as well as the influx of newcomers that we have had. We're going to overview the scores from access, our syllabi literacy, and some book studies we've been doing with our department. As I mentioned to you last year, again, I put these really small, which was the presentation that the ELL is the umbrella, the English Language Learning Program, of which there are a number of different programs that run under that. We also wanted to touch base, which may also clarify a previous question in regards to the difference from providing ESL and bilingual services. Clearly, when we have 20 or more students of a particular language in a building, then we need to provide support and/or instruction in said language. All of the schools that you see listed there are schools that receive bilingual services. We added a school here. If I'm not mistaken, we added, which one, Granger? Granger, I'm sorry, Hill, Hill Middle School. In Hill, our numbers of Spanish have gone over 20, so we've added that in there. We're monitoring very closely a couple of schools where they have barely reached the 20 mark. The state does give us a little leeway to ensure that that population maintains and stays steady before they come and say, hey, you must ensure that you are providing services or support in that language for those students. I wanted to compare the difference from last year to this year just so that you have a little bit, not a better understanding, but a good understanding of where we've come from, from last year to this year, as opposed to looking back at 14, 15 years back. And as you can see, this is, as a district, our number of languages has increased by an additional eight. Our number of ELLs has increased by almost 400 students and our number of staff has increased by about five teachers and classified staff members. In terms of comparison from the languages, you can see that there is a shift in the bottom three, where Arabic has now dropped to actually 11th. And then you can see Russian moved up, Marathi and Malayalam moved up, and Russian moved up to be on our top 10. And if you were to look at the top 10 languages in English Language Learning, Russian is sitting around 7th.
All right, so as you can imagine, with the current situation happening in Eastern Europe, our district has experienced a large increase in the number of newcomers to our district of Ukrainian and Russian descent. You can imagine that this has put a strain on our staff members, both general education teachers and our ELL teachers, to provide instruction that is both comprehensible and at the appropriate grade level for both social and instructional purposes. This has impacted social and emotional needs in our buildings for both staff, students, and families. We have been working diligently to provide translating interpreters. However, these services are at a minimum. Rafael is in the process of hiring two Russian teacher assistants and that has helped some. Another concern that we have had is the instructional supplies and materials of these languages are not readily available nor comparable to that of our English counterparts. So currently, I am heading a committee of teachers and we are working on putting together resources and some professional development for our ELL teachers to share with their building staff members on how to best address this influx of newcomers that we have seen. This is not a new situation, but I think given that the climate in Eastern Europe has really highlighted this, it's kind of like at the forefront and we're seeing it. It's a great concern at many of our schools.
Particularly for our staff.
Yes.
Gened staff feel as if they possibly cannot convey the instruction as hard as they may be trying to these students. So we are doing the best we can to alleviate the situation with this committee to help provide some additional professional development for them, to help them in the process. I'd like to provide you a little feedback as to the comparison of access scores. As it has changed over the last three years that we have received scores. You will notice that there was one year in the chart I provided you that there's a skip and that was all due to the pandemic, where they had moved the testing to later in the year and then they completely removed it due to the fact that we had the COVID pandemic and students couldn't take it. Another point that is intriguing for us is the number of long-term English language learners, which is considered to be any student that's in the program longer than seven years. While we can see a trend on some Hispanics to be long-term English learners, the reality is that now the trend has shifted to the amount of special education students that are being qualified as English learners and unfortunately, may not have the necessary wherewithal or skill to be able to exit through the access test.
I think last year, at our middle school and high school, the percents were around 31% to 33% of our English learners also having an IEP. And so we're seeing that trend as we're moving forward. As far as our, as you know, that every year, our English learners take the access test for ELLs. We test our students in January and February and then we get the scores in May. And in order for a student to meet the exit criteria given by the state of Illinois, a student must score a 4.8 composite on the access for ELL test. This is requirements by Illinois. Every state, though, sets their own entry and exit criteria, which is just an interesting note, even those that belong to the same guiding consortium. So 4.8 is Illinois's criteria.
So here's where you get to see the good stuff of the information, the meat of it. And as you can see, particularly in 2021, even coming back after the pandemic year, that there were two grade levels that the company that provides the test were not able to provide those scores. And therefore, the majority of the students, well, the rest of the students at the elementary level accounted for 25%. But we do see a trend on the fourth graders being the grade level that tends to exit. Now, it used to be third grade, now it's changed to fourth grade. And so that may account for 25% of elementary students increasing. That is not to say that we're not, that we're doing, we are doing a good job clearly and we're proud of the fact we see those numbers go up. But as you see it from '21 to '22, the numbers did go down. That has happened across the board, not only for us, but for IAR.
Yeah, IAR.
I, thank you. IAR as well? A little tongue twister. And so now, if you look all the way at the bottom, you can see that the state's average for exit was 8.5 and they also dropped to a 6.1 overall, as we did as well. So we are hoping that now that a year in full school plus this year will help in our scores for next year. We're going to switch to this, that was, I thought we had another one, okay. So, so let's talk a little bit about the syllabi literacy, which is great for our district in terms of, we have had the opportunity to measure how our students are choosing to obtain something that is going to be worthwhile for them in the future, not only at the workforce, but also at the university level where they get additional credits. Last, in 2021, was the sixth year that we implemented the program and there were 91 students that obtained a seal and 56 students that obtained the commendation. However, you'll notice that there were only 16 tests that we offered where in 2022, while the number of students that obtained the seal went down and the number of students that obtained the commendation went down, the number of languages that we are now offering for students is much, much higher. Hopefully, that will entice more students within the district to participate and take the test. Please understand that that figure in the middle is not really a reflection of our district not doing well, but of the amount of students that are actually going out and wanting to take the test. For the most part, I would say there is a large percentage, I can't give you the exact percentage, but there is a large percentage of our students that once they take the test, they either end up taking, getting the seal or getting the commendation. So we're now sitting at 50, 50, 50 different languages and we have had a a great number of students of the Tamil language, for example, that have been very proactive to wanting to take the test. I have had ample conversations with a small community of Tamil parents that have, were wondering, how can we get Tamil, how can we get Tamil? And so we did our investigating last year, we provided a different test, and so this year, we switched to this other test that not only provides Tamil, but provides the array of languages that you see on the presentation. That's on the seal.
Also, for the past couple of years, our ELL department, we have been providing book study opportunities for our ELL teachers with an effort to increase their toolboxes and improve their pedagogy for ESL instruction in the classrooms. So for the past two years, I have been facilitating these book studies. It is completely voluntary, and we have had full attendance for both of them, which has been great. We had really good feedback on our book studies, and our teachers are feeling that they are better equipped to work with the, our ESL students, given the diversity of the population that we have, and especially with the newcomer population that is continuing to infiltrate in our buildings. So we just wanted to share that we've been doing that. Our teachers come and participate on a monthly basis, and then they have time to go back to their classrooms, implement those strategies. And again, we're doing this in an effort to improve our teachers' abilities to provide effective ESL instruction to all students.
Just to point out, these two books that we have used for the book study are the same books we're also using for PD with, on PD Wednesdays with our entire staff of teachers. You have how many, about twenty or twenty-four students?
Twenty-four in the book study.
Twenty-four in the book study that show up, and they show up voluntarily. They don't ask if there is a stipend, if there's anything for them to do this. They, you know, they want to learn and they want to expand, and so they're do, they're taking it up the extra step, and then when we do our, our PDWs, those teachers also provide additional feedback for the rest of the staff.
Right.
And with that, I am going to leave it out to questions for you.
Thank you. Ms. Dumbing.
Thank you. Thank you for the update and an opportunity to see the variety of arenas where we have new students coming in from, and, and thank you so much to what you're doing in helping our teachers feel as if they're more equipped and prepared to service students in the manner, of course, in which they'd like to. We go to slide five. Just, can you share a little bit? I know you're, as you, as you talk about the social and emotional needs for staff and students, I guess especially the students and the families, are there, are we be, are we able to find persons that are their language speaking that we can, that help assist as far as working to meet those needs? Can you share a little bit about some of the strategies that you're using in order to help families?
So I have a little red notebook, if you will, in my desk, where I compile names of lots of parents, community members that may be able to speak a second language and have raised their hand and said, you know, if you need me to help with this or that language, I would be more than happy to do so. However, I don't let them do it gratuitously. I do pay them the minimum stipend for translating or, yeah, for interpreting, I'm sorry, for interpreting. So we do have about eight different Russian people that are helping us at the moment, including the two that are in the process of being certified as teacher assistants. That is a, a trend that we are noticing when we're trying to hire teacher assistants of another language. They do come from other countries with a great education. However, their transcripts and everything else is all in that other language, and in order for the Illinois State Board of Education to give them a license, they have to have those transcripts viewed by a third party who then translates it and then sends them to ISB, and then they turn around and decide if they meet the criteria. So with our two current Russian people that I have offered positions to, we are in that process of waiting that. While we wait for that, clearly, the two buildings that I have hired them for are not having that. But they do have certain parents, and including one of the two Russian interpreters slash translators is being used on the side as a vendor to help, and she has gone to parent-teacher conferences to help and IEP meetings to help in that regard. I have a couple in, in a variety of other languages such as Arabic, clearly I have in Spanish. So we are trying to do the best we can to provide the communication for parents in their language. Is it enough? Absolutely not. Could we do better? Absolutely. Are we working our hardest to do so? Absolutely, and we will continue to do so.
You, you bring up a, you know, a, a strong point regarding what's required certification-wise, and we've had that conversation throughout the nation, as you look at the shortage of teachers. Is the, are you guys, you and counterparts across the, the state or district, are you being able to have any conversations at the state level to influence that certification requirement or, or, you know, how they can help make it a little easier for, to see those that are qualified be able to?
We, we, we try, and we share resources within directors as well. There's the group for DEL, which is within the Regional Office of Education, that meets quarterly. It's all the EL directors within DuPage County and some from other counties that want to join, because they're not exclusive, they're very inclusive to any director that wants to join. So, and we email back and forth, and, and the collaboration that we do, for example, has helped me in particular in finding new resources in Russian and Ukrainian to help that population. I, in turn, get that information or the links, and then I reach out to the teachers that have that high population, share it with them and say, see if from here there's anything that you would find useful in your classroom so that I can purchase it because I can use the grant funds for that. So that's a step that we're using in that direction. In terms of speaking with ISB about it, you know, there are a lot of little hoops that you do have to go through, as everybody else does, but we are doing our best and we are voicing our, making sure our voices are heard.
Thank you so much. I would imagine that we have one of the highest levels of variety of languages around, so thank you. I know it's very, going to be very challenging. Thank you for the work that you did.
Thank you.
Mr. Rising.
Do you guys have a ballpark? You can always get back to me in an email, but ballpark of how, I mean, you said that we've seen in somewhat of it influx of Ukrainian or Russian descent students, and obviously it made it into our top ten, right? So that would tell you, do you know, I mean, what are we talking, number, number students-wise? Is it, is it, is it dozens? Is it, is it?
It's.
You can always look.
When I, when I look at the percentage, when I say they made the top ten.
Yeah.
Okay, think about this. Our top, our top percentage-wise is Spanish with about six hundred students or so of Spanish-speaking descent. However, that is not truly our highest population of ELS. It is Indian. But India has a wide number of languages, and those languages are counted individually.
Yeah.
So second is, is Telugu, and that goes down to about four hundred or so, and, and then so on. When we get to Russian, we're talking two percent of our EL population.
Okay.
And that's making the ten percent. So numbers-wise, not necessarily. When you see that, that Russian has cracked our top ten, the reality is that a large portion of our ELS fluctuates between that number one spot and that number seven spot, and from there, it drastically drops. Now, I do have the exact number, I just don't have it on me, but I'd be happy to send it to you.
Are you seeing good trend? First of all, when did you say they take the access test?
In January and February.
Okay, so we really won't have a, the last data we have was from twenty twenty-two.
Right.
So hopefully.
Yeah.
I look forward to you letting us know what that comes back at, because I'd like to see if we have that bounce back to where we were.
Yeah.
You know, judging on Charles's presentation, hopefully we'll see also that bounce back with our ELL students like we're seeing with our English language speakers.
Please keep in mind that most of these students are newcomers. For them to exit, while the average years for an EL to exit is five to seven years, our district averages exiting students at three, three-point-five pers, uh, per, uh, three to three-point-five percent per year.
Okay.
I'm sorry, three years to three and a half years to exit students. That is remarkable. You won't see that across the state. However, a large portion of all of these students come from the Asian descent that has outstanding and rigorous home ethics in terms of ensuring that their kids are progressing as well. I will be the first to tell you, as a Hispanic person, that unfortunately, that's not always the case with the Hispanic community, particularly because those communities may come, or those students may come as immigrants from very low socioeconomic status, where the parents may not have that education to help the kids progress. So keep that in mind in adding how our percentages are very good, because as you see in the district-wide, our number of Asian population is also extremely high as a whole. But, yeah, I hope that that.
Yeah, no, it did. And then just one last question. Our, our ELL students, which, you know, up to thirty-four hundred now, by state law, they're all required to take the Illinois Assessment for Readiness and/or SAT, correct? I mean, all, all our stu, all our students take that, whether you're an IEP ELL student or you're just an ELL student. They, tho, those numbers are factored into our overall proficiency scores, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, all right.
However, not, access doesn't, there's two, two separate.
No, I know that, yeah. No, I know access is separate from IAR. I just wanted to, you know, obviously, if you're not very good at, this is kind of why I was asking the question, if you're not very fluent in English.
You mean, performance well.
Yeah, and if you're, and then you're required to take a state test, and now granted, all, all thirty-four hundred kids, I, I know there are some that are very fluent in English, not all of them, but, you know, clearly, if you don't speak very fluent English, that is going to impact proficiency scores for the district.
However, just so you can see the difference, because these kids are learning the English language at a much more rapid pace than, say, a general ed student is acquiring knowledge as a whole. Our number of EL students in terms of the percentage of growth in all these other tests is bigger than the others, but that is not reflective on intelligence on either side, but on the fact that they are now acquiring the language. To be able to show better proficiency, that does not mean that they are passing.
Right.
It means that they were at a one and now they're at a three, per se.
Well, and people that don't understand proficiency for the Illinois Assessment of Readiness test, that, that was the whole premise of why they changed the way the scoring was to measure growth a lot better so we could help the kids grow and get more proficient. So I, I'd sometimes be love to see the, those numbers on the growth of our ELL students, but that's all I had. Thank you.
Ms. Jane.
Thank you so much for today's presentation and the work you're doing in our district. Just remarkable. I think of it as such a gift when our students can speak multiple languages and that it's being nurtured and understood and not seen as something against them, but seeing them fully. It's such, it's such a gift to be in a district like this that sees that. I just had a few questions. One in regard to what Board Member Dumbing was mentioning with regard to the staffing. And in the interim, as we try to hire our Russian, Ukrainian descent interpreters, translators, do you have software or other mechanisms to support you or support staff? I think you, you spoke to some resources based on your networking, but is there, are, is there software out there to kind of fill in the gap?
There, there are. However, the for free stuff in the internet these days has also increased in its accuracy. So our teachers are using Google Translate not only to help that general message, but they also have a tab for documents, and as long as the document is a true PDF document, you can download it, and it'll download the entire document in English, and it will recognize the language and automatically do it. So that's just an example. Can there be better communication? That's something we're working on as a team in the CNIT.
And with regard to slides ten and eleven and our biliteracy program. So can you explain a little bit more as to what this test involves? And if I'm understanding this correctly, if they take this test or series of tests, I'm not sure what's involved, then they get some sort of acknowledgement on their transcript?
Correct.
That, that they're, that they are bilingual in these two languages? Okay.
So the, the SEALA biliteracy wants to ensure that students are proficient enough so that they can be productive members in the workforce in that particular language. The language addresses all four domains that we cover as well in English language learning, which are listening, speaking, reading, and writing. So the test will have four sections that address each one of those domains. And so the students take the test. The test does come in pieces, but they do have an entire morning to accomplish it. If, once they're done with the test, the results come back, and they may have not done as well in a particular domain, they can retake just that domain to, to get the, the necessary score. Some students choose to, other students don't, and they end up just receiving the commendation, per se. In addition to that, the state of Illinois recognizes a certain number or proficiency level, and that has to be intermediate high in order to receive the SEALA biliteracy, and an intermediate low to receive the commendation. Anything below that, the student does not qualify for a recommendation on either one of those two. Once the student receives that, at the end of the year, I provide a report to the state on all of our students with student IDs, the whole nine yards, they put it into their database, and that's how they get the number of percentages of students within the state that are taking it. In addition to that, yes, we do, I personally am the one that enters it into every transcript for our seniors. Do it only on senior year to ensure that we're not doubling up or that we mess up. And we also have a, a very nice stamp that comes up. And we also have a, a very nice, um, stamp that comes up on the, on the, on the diploma that is stamped personally by our world language department chairs based on the results.
And so, this test can only be taken during your high school years, or is there no...
No, it can be taken any time between your freshman year and your senior year. By the way, if you are an EL student and you pass the access between your first year and, and your last year, that counts towards the seal. So, the student would have had the chance of earn part of the biliteracy, the English part would automatically count for them as, uh, part of the award for the seal. They just have to take the test in their native language.
And last question regarding this, the bi- the seal of biliteracy doesn't waive your foreign language requirements for, in, for higher education or anything?
It does not. However, universities do. If you go to a university and you present that you have earned the seal, they will give you X amount of credit hours, which in turn is helpful for parents and monetary issues, right, reasons. Um, and it, in terms of, uh, of oral language, it does not correlate to that.
Okay, and so if a student is interested in taking one of these exams, they would ask?
We have our website, and in our website is updated. We have two dates, one in the fall and now one in the spring, uh, towards the beginning of the spring. We tend to give an opportunity to seniors first in the first round, and then the second round is clearly open for everybody. And they can, they can ju- they have to register and then they have to pay. And then they bring their little receipt to the testing session. As long as they registered with one of the department chairs, they will have it there and they're shown a computer.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Carubis.
Thank you, President Donahue.
I appreciate you, uh, trying to limit to thirteen slides, a subject that covers a hundred and sixteen languages and three thousand four hundred and thirteen students. I think you can see from the questions, it's, uh, the board members are interested in delving a little bit deeper, and it doesn't have to be a slide, so the, the communication, um, answer question is, is a little bit deeper than, than normal. As a policymaking body, um, I like to reference back to the board policy as you did in the, your first slide. Um, and Board Policy six colon one sixty references parent involvement. And it talks about parents of English language learners being informed about how they can participate and serve in the district's bilingual parent advisory committee. Can you tell me a little bit about that committee?
Absolutely, so, the purpose of the bilingual parent advisory council is twofold. One, to keep parents informed and to aid parents in the resources that may be in the community for them. And number two, to keep them abreast of everything that is happening within the educational setting of their children in school. Uh, one of the things that we have done over the past two years, as I mentioned to you in the responses, uh, and based on, on the unfortunate pandemic we had, was we shifted to our meetings online, which showed a great number of participations. Uh, I was actually shocked as how many parents were actually participating in our inline, online, uh, meetings. And we use that opportunity to provide them with some professional development on how to best address the needs of those students at home. And even last year after the pandemic was over, we continued that process and we used more PD to help them, um, not only focus on this, the instruction that they're receiving, but on strategies on how to stay involved in their kids' education and how to help them better. In addition to that, uh, we provide quarterly, uh, the English language learner's report card, which is completely different from the, uh, district report card. And this is extremely delineated into all four domains and where is each child in each domain, at what level are they in, with feedback from teachers. Tracy has done a phenom- I cannot say enough for this lady sitting to my right, onto your left hand. But, uh, she is, she has done a phenomenal job of preparing these report cards to even now be online with synergy so that our parents can receive that communication directly through synergy as opposed to in paper and pencil or paper and ink, uh, and counting that the kids deliver these. And, and as you can imagine, that can sometimes be a challenge. Uh, but, that is a great tool that we're using, that we use also during parent teacher conferences uh, for parents to refer back to or teachers to refer back to as they are discussing issues with the parents. Uh, we are also encouraging parents to participate in a wide variety of activities that we provide at each school. I know that each one of our schools does a multicultural evening, but that's not it. I mean, our teachers are extremely proactive in communicating with parents. And here is where your question comes, and how can we better that in a form that would be more effective? And that's something we're working on. As we do with our teachers, that is an expectation, it is not a would you. It's an expectation that our teachers maintain a high level of communication with our parents in, in the best interest of students.
Well, obviously, your answer expanded beyond telling me about the bilingual parent advisory committee. But I, it tells me the immense amount of work that you're doing by involving the parents in their kids' education. And, uh, I think with this population, there needs to be, uh, specific emphasis on that. Um, and because the, the, the board policy talks about, um, the board wanting administration to make sure that parents will be informed about these things, I think it's very important for, um, administration to inform the, the board that these are all of the great things that we're doing, because you are doing great work. Um, but oftentimes, um, the board work doesn't see that there's a separate report card, doesn't see that, um, there's all these multicultural nights. Uh, and so, uh, it's very important to hear that report, and it doesn't have to be in writing. And, uh, but thank you for, um, letting, uh, us know all of the great work that you're doing to involve the parents and the students' education.
And I, I'll be hosting our second BPAC meeting in a week and a few days on the fifteenth. And in that meeting, I will be presenting along with another teacher on the access test for parents so that they have a good understanding of what it takes for their kids to pass, what sample questions, because, believe it or not, that's question number one I get from, from our parents is, how can my kid exit? Can you give me an example of what the test looked like? Well, I cannot show you the test, but I can show you samples of the test and direct you to the website that provides you all of these things that you could practice in advance with those students, which are the same things that actually our teachers do with the students prior to them taking the test. They take them through those sample questions and the practice to hope that the students can perform better.
So, you specifically tell them why your kid has been identified for this program?
Absolutely.
And what it's going to take for them to exit the program?
Correct.
And you assist them in the steps to get there?
I, we try so hard.
Awesome, thank you.
Ms. Grover.
I don't think I have any questions really, because they've asked everything. I just want to, um, have, I just have a couple of comments. Um, BPAC is so important. I was, had the privilege to sit in on them and the amount of information you give and provide these families who are first getting used to the school culture, because the school culture here is so different from where they've been. Um, and then the bigger culture too, because they have questions as newcomers. Where can I get this from? Where do I do groceries? Where can I go to a hospital? So, it's really important to have those facilitators that you talked about, um, as well as the meetings. I'm glad you were able to reach out to a bigger audience through the Zoom meetings and, um, hopefully, it'll kickstart getting more and more people involved and to get a bigger audience. Um, I just want to say thank you for all the work you're doing. And again, if, if there's anything that the board can, or the district can help you with to access more, um, of these students, you know, we'd love to hear about that.
And I want to thank you for coming to our meetings.
Thank you.
Ms. Fazdak.
Alright, first of all, thank you. I'm going to thank my fellow board members for asking a lot of good questions. Um, so I really just have first one point of commendation, um, as a former ESL instructor. I love that you're providing an opportunity for ESL teachers to come together and learn together. And the fact that they're coming is reflective of how much they care about our students. So, the fact that you're providing that space for them to do that and encouraging it is, uh, a benefit for the students, for the teachers altogether. Um, and the fact that teachers want to come, not only shows that they care about the students, but that they feel respected and appreciated and they want to learn more from you. So, thank you for providing that for our teachers, which then in turn benefits all of us. Um, and then finally, I wish I had thought of this when I was reading through this program before, but it, it stuck out to me now and verbally, so if it's something that needs to be answered later, that's fine. Um, but you mentioned many of our ELL students also have IEPs. So, I'm wondering how well are we serving our students? Who, the percentage of students who have IEPs who are, have, for example, special needs or need occupational therapy or, um, or specialists? Are we able to meet those needs of those students at this time? And, uh, do we have teachers who have both certifications for special ed and for ELL?
We can answer that question for you today.
Okay, great.
Alright, uh, and we're gonna teamwork on this one. But just so you, for example, our, our teachers at the preschool level where we see a large number of students with IEPs are both certified in, uh, triple certified. Uh, they got their EC endorsement, they got their special ed endorsement, they also have the EL endorsement. Uh, at all of our schools, regardless of the, if you want to call it a label, the designation is a better word for it, that our students have, they are required because they've qualified to receive services. And our teachers do work with them. Now, we do have students that have major needs, disabilities, and it's extremely hard to provide services, for example, to a student that is deaf-mute. Okay? So, we, what we do is we do consultation with the, with the, uh, uh, teachers of special ed that those students are in an inclusion program to provide strategies to better work with them, um, and understanding that there are times where we are probably not going to be able to reach them based on that disability, but we, we're, we're doing the best we can in that arena. You want to pitch in on that?
Well, yeah, and we definitely encourage in cases where students might be on what's called kind of like a consultation in more extreme cases. We still encourage all of our teachers to make contact with those students, whether it's going into their classrooms once a week, saying hi to those students, doing check-ins periodically, because at the end of the day, those students do need to take the access test. In many cases, are kiddos that are taking the alternate access for ELLs, which is the, um, test for students with severe cognitive disabilities. And for that reason, we, it's necessary that our teachers be familiar with the students' IEPs, testing accommodations, to be able to successfully, um, provide them with a successful testing opportunity. So, we do encourage if services are not appropriate or, um, for those students, that the relationship is forged and that that teacher still fosters that relationship with kids. So, when testing time comes around, it's not an awkward or unfamiliar situation.
Thank you very much.
So, you're generating a lot of interesting questions. Um, it's a very important program for us, and I'm going to share personally, in the last month, I had two opportunities to, um, intersect with, um, the work of the ELL, um, program. I was in a bilingual class last week for, um, at Georgetown, and so I got to see in action the teachers and the support that was going on there. And I substituted in, um, second grade at another school, and one of the students in my class had zero English, um, Spanish, and brand new to the district. And I also saw all of the people coming in to pull her out to help her with different things. They'd bring her back for my story hour, but it was, um, it was great. And I really appreciate the experience, being able to see that personally myself. Um, I want to go to slide five. And Ms. Demming pulled this up too and a couple others, but when I look at this slide, this is the beauty of public education. Um, public schools are in place to educate all students, whether you have an ELL need, or you have an IEP need, or you're not the smartest kid in the bunch, or whatever. Um, we're here to help all of our students, and it is incredibly impressive to look at what our teachers, um, need to support in our, in our school. So, you know, kudos to everyone. I also want to go back, sorry, to slide four. So, if I calculate this, this looks like a ten percent increase in the number of students that we're seeing with ELL needs. And going back to Mr. Rising's comments about our IAR testing, so, in our district, our population overall is down, right?
The total number of students is, yeah, down, it's dropping, keeps dropping every year.
So, our overall population is going down, but our ELL population went up ten percent. Everyone takes the IAR test, and those results all go into the pot that shows how our district is doing. Um, so, it is a challenging environment. And, um, again, the success our district has been seeing in our results and testing scores, and, uh, it just overall is, uh, again, contributing to, um, really an impressive amount of work for people. I mean, when you hear that students are exiting on average in three years versus much longer outside our district, uh, another data point that is important, um, for us to continue with. Um, Tracy, you brought up that, um, the exit criteria for Illinois was four point eight.
Yes.
Do you know what it is for other states? Like, is that harder than others, easier than others?
Um, I, for the most part, it seems that other states actually have a lower exit rate cri- or a lower criteria than we do. Some are at like four point four, four point six. It's just very odd. Um, it used to be that Illinois was the only state with a dual cri- exit criteria. In the past, you had to have an overall of five with a literacy composite of four point two. The state got rid of that about, uh, five or six years ago and just made it a flat four point eight. Um, but yes, it does vary by state. And even though there's like thirty-eight states that belong to the WEDA consortium, which is our guiding consortium, it's interesting because every, every state has granted the ability to create their own entrance and exit criteria. So, sometimes we find kids who, let's say, come from Pennsylvania and they did not qualify as an English learner there, but surprise, surprise, they do here in Illinois. And so, it's very kind of interesting how that works and vice versa. So, I would say we're on the, probably the higher end of the exit criteria, uh, requirement.
Okay, and then, um, on slide eleven. So on the seal of biliteracy, I see all of these languages, like way more than what we teach in our district. So from a district perspective, are we, our only role in helping with this in some of these languages is just to help the kids register or and also to put it on their transcript or their diploma?
No, not really.
No?
We we are really trying to provide those students that are at a marginal level, that come in from other countries, something extra to to give them that recognition. There's 50 languages here, and honestly speaking, if I were to go through all of them, I could probably tell you that we have tested kids in about 10 of these languages. But that's not the point. The point is why not offer more, if possible, and allow them or those families that come from a variety of places to say, hey, I'm, I came from here. You have my language? Can my this, sorry, can my kid test? Absolutely, why not? You know, they're they're not receiving that foreign language here, that's for sure. But they have the opportunity, because they're native speakers of that language, to possibly attain an additional certification that, you know, it's a little recognition for them, and why not offer it?
I think that was it, and I again, thank you for all of the work and effort to support these students, which is very important and our and growing importance in our district. So thank you.
Thank you. Can I throw a little shout out before we leave?
Yes.
Over the, I was gonna do this in Spanish after our SEL slide, just to show you what it feels like to be a student of a different language, and you all would have looked at me like, huh, what did he say? And then I was gonna ask you if you had any questions in Spanish, and you'd have looked at me and said, what? And then I'd have said, okay, no questions, right, because you didn't understand anything. But in not doing that, what I wanted to say during that little bit is I wanted to shoot a shout out to Mrs. Laura Rosenbloom and the elementary principals who have gathered together, and we have had at least one session up to the moment, and we're possibly planning on a second one, to brainstorm of different things that we can do for these newcomers that are coming in from from Eastern Europe. Because it is tough on them, and the principals are hard at work thinking on what are other things that we can possibly do. And so we are all as administrators in the district, putting our heads together to try to help, which is a, I think, a great show of the collaboration that happens in this district amongst all administrators and teachers.
Thank you. Okay, our last agenda item is legislative advocacy and Board of Education update. Does anyone have anything? Nope. Okay, I need a motion to adjourn in a second.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?